So I think we're gonna go ahead and get started. So my name is Krista Dennis and I'm the Events and Program Coordinator at the Aurora Public Library District. Welcome everyone to How to Run for the Library Board of Trustees. Before we get started, I do wish to remind everyone that the session is being recorded for future viewing and will be available on our website and our YouTube channel afterwards, so you can check it out there. Also, you might have noticed that I dropped a link in the chat to our trustee resource website. This website is indispensable for all the links and documents and resources that you'll need to run for the board. So a recording of this session will be linked there, as well as our PowerPoint presentation tonight, and everything you'll need to reference back to afterwards. So as you know, library trustees are community advocates who volunteer to help serve the library mission and vision by directing the funds and policies of the institution. Trustees in a library district are elected, and Tuesday, April 6th, 2021, is the first election for the Aurora Public Library District. Yay! So to help explain the process, I am joined by Bertha Bailey from the League of Women Voters Aurora Area. Hi, Bertha.
Hello.
And Jean Bednar, President of the Gil Borden Public Library District Board in Elgin. Welcome, Jean. And Terry Tamblin, President of the USPGO Public Library District Board of Trustees in nearby USPGO. Hi, Terry.
Hi.
Thanks for being here, all of you. So we're gonna go ahead and get started with Bertha, who will review the processing guidelines for running, followed by Jean and Terry, who will talk a little bit about why they decided to serve their communities as library trustee, and their own experiences and challenges. So following the presentations, we will take questions from the audience. And since this is like a Zoom meeting, as opposed to a more like formal webinar, this can be more of a direct discussion. We can use our mics if you want, or you can type it into the chat if you have a question, and we'll get to those as many as possible at the end, and I'll be monitoring the chat. How does that sound?
Sounds good.
All right, great. So without further ado, I'm gonna hand it off to Bertha, and I'm going to share screen and kind of be in charge of the slides. Here we go.
All right.
All right.
Are we set? Well, as Krista had mentioned, all of this information will be available to you, so you can link into the PowerPoint presentation and also through the 2021 Candidates Guide information that has been referenced in almost every page that we will be talking about. So my name again is Berta Bailey, and I am a member of the League of Women Voters Aurora Area. Our chapter is just over a year old, and in that brief time, we have registered hundreds of voters held candidate forms for the 2018 election, and we are currently holding both voter registration events and candidate forms for the November 3rd election. Our mission at the League of Women Voters Aurora Area is to promote political responsibility to inform, enact, and participation of citizens in government, and to act on selected issues. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose any political party or candidates. So on the next slide, you'll see that is all of our contact information. Krista, can you move that to the next slide?
Okay, is everybody seeing the slide with the information for the League of Women Voters?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
There we go. All right, so you can see that you can find us at our website. You can email us. You can also find us on Facebook and Instagram. So if you're interested in knowing more about us or joining the league, just feel free to contact myself, or in any way of those forms available. So I will be going through the information that we have put together for you to know about the process. This information will also, as we mentioned, will be found on the Candidates Guide. So I will just briefly go over the slides, and if you have any questions, please feel free to chat in with Krista. All right, qualifications, two qualifications, not too difficult. You must be a qualified elector of the library district with one-year residency in the district at the time your nominations are filed. You also need to be eligible in order to serve trustee at the time by filing nomination papers if you are in the arrears in the payment of a tax or other indebtedness due to the library district or have been convicted in a U.S. court of any infamous crime, bribery, perjury, or other felony does not make you an available candidate. All right, general filing information. It is suggested that you find legal counsel regarding your legal qualifications for your office, the proper method for completing the petition forms, the amount of signatures required, the qualifications of signers and circulators, as well as other information. Of friends that I've had who have run for different offices, they've all sought some legal counsel to make sure that all their paperwork is in order, and they are particular about that paperwork when it is filed. How candidates file? You will be filing as a nonpartisan candidate, and you will be filing that in all of your forms, you will be filling out forms that refer to nonpartisanship. And this will be found, this information will be found on page 15 of the 2021 guide. Okay, there are four items that you are going to be filing. The first one is a statement of candidacy. You will be filing a nonpartisan form, and you can see the information there. And that again is on the Candidates Guide. You will also file a receipt for the filing of a statement of economic interests. optionally, you can file a loyalty oath, which is also, you can find all of these in the guide. And you will be filing your nominating petition sheets, and they will be nonpartisan nominating petition sheets, and we'll tell you a little bit more about this in future slides. And this will be found on page 45 of the guide. So the filing periods are important. The main thing to know is that your filing period will be between 8:00 a.m. Monday, December 14th, and 5:00 p.m. through 5:00 p.m. Monday, December 21st. Everything must be in by that Monday, 21st, at 5:00 p.m. You will be filing your nominating papers, maybe filed by mail or in person, either by the candidate or a representative of the candidate. And nominating petitions must be filed, must be filed, I'm sorry, with the Library Board Secretary, who is Melinda Riddick at the Suntory Library. Petition preparation and formatting. There's a lot of detail here, and again, you can refer to this in the guide, but we'll just go through this briefly. So you need to submit a petition for nomination with at least 50 signatures. It is, many candidates file more than 50, maybe 75 to 100 to provide a cushion. And the reason for this is that maybe some of the signatures are not, will not be verified. Therefore, you have more than you need to cover any errors. The heading of the nomination petition pages must be completed prior to the circulation of the petition sheet, and should be the same on each sheet. So every sheet needs to have the same exact information. The State Board of Election will certify each candidate's name as it appears on the first numbered page of the petition. So they will check to make sure everything is exactly the same. And the candidate's name should appear in exactly the same form on the petition sheets and statement of candidacy to be certifiable. All filed, all filled petition sheets must contain original signatures. Photocopies or duplicates are not acceptable. And continuing with this, the petition signature sheets must be numbered consecutively, beginning with the top sheet as numbered one. Attach the remaining documents to the top of the nominating sheet unnumbered. The statement of economic interest receipt may be filed no later than 5:00 p.m. on that last day on which nominating papers may be filled. The petition signature sheets must be neatly and securely fastened together at one edge in book form, and the petition once filed shall not be altered or added to. And these are really strict points that you have to adhere to, or they will not accept your nomination. The signing and circulating of petitions. So circulating. A petition circulator must be 17 years of age and a qualified voter in Illinois. The circulator must personally witness all signatures given and sign the required certificate stating that all signatures were given in their presence. Petition sheets must not be circulated more than 90 days preceding the last day of filing of the petition. And that's beginning on September 22nd is the date. Petitions may be circulated starting September 22nd for the filing period of December 14 through the 21st. So you can start circulating your petitions on the 22nd, and you need to file in between the 14th and the 21st of December. Signing of the petitions. A signer must sign their own signature on the petition. The signer cannot sign for someone else, such as another member of their family. A petition signer must be a registered voter from the address shown opposite their signature on the petition. Terms of office. There will be seven trustees elected for six years in staggered terms. Terms will begin on May 17th, 2021. After the election, the trustee shall determine, shall be determined by lot two trustees to serve for terms of two years, two trustees to serve for terms of four years, and three trustees to serve for terms of six years. After the election, the trustees may also decide to decrease the maximum term to four years. This is a checklist, which will be handy for you. There are some items on this checklist that do not apply to you, and it's basically the same information that we've gone through, where your eligibility and your filing of your economic interests and your oath, if you want to do that one, as well as your petitions. So it's a good reference, and that's also in the guide. So your timetable for the April 6th election. On Tuesday, September 22nd, will be the first day when you can start circulating your petitions. You can file your petitions and all your information on Monday, starting on Monday, December 14th, ending on December 21st at 5:00. And those will be filed, your nominating papers, with the Library Board Secretary. On Thursday, January 31st, the last day, is the last day for certification of candidates. And on Tuesday, April 6th, is the consolidated elections. This information, again, is what we have covered, but it's very succinct, and it also has the links to the different forms that you will be wanting to make copies of. And so it goes through basically the same information that we have already presented to you on the slides, but it's a good reference for you.
So we can take questions now, a little bit, if you have some about this presentation. We can take questions now, or we can wait until the end? Does anybody have any questions at the moment about what Bertha just talked about? Just dying to get out right now.
Pretty straightforward, but, you know, and the guide is really great. And also in the guide, there are two resources, one to Springfield and one to more local, I think it's City of Chicago, with phone numbers that you can call and ask information about. And I called just to gather some information from the presentation. They were very helpful and got back to me right away if they couldn't. So that is also right in the guide, one of the first few pages in the guide. And I definitely encourage you to use that as a resource.
Yes, and I put a link directly to the guide in our chat. So if you just wanna say that or check it out, you know, now, you know, whatever. Okay. If there aren't any questions moving forward, thank you so much, Bertha. I really appreciate you presenting that.
You're welcome.
Okay, we do have one question in the chat. It says, "Who decides who stays for two, four, or six years?"
That's a good question, and I don't have the answer to that, but I can certainly find that out. Krista, do you have any idea?
You know, I kind of surmised from what I read and researched that the board actually decides that in their first meeting.
Ah, so that's what they meant by lot. You know, they, as a group, will then decide who does what term, as well as maybe having the largest term, the longest term be four years instead of six.
Right, yeah. And maybe, you know, some of that stuff can be clarified too by Jean or Terry. We'll just kind of move into their discussion. We'll start with Jean, and go ahead and tell us all about why you wanted to run for the library board and your experience, and maybe some challenges.
Okay, here we go. Yeah, I think we get 15 minutes, and that's like one minute for each year that I've been on the board or something close to that. So I originally agreed to run for the board when there were going to be more vacancies than there were people running, and so it seemed like a good idea at the time, but then that didn't end up happening, so I actually wasn't elected the first time I ran. But I did end up being asked by one of the board members, Mike Alf, who was a former mayor here in Elgin and very beloved library patron and library trustee. He asked if I would put my name in the hat when they had a vacancy on the board after that. And so I did, and I ended up being appointed to the board. So that's how I got on it at first. And when you're appointed, if you want to stay on the board, even if you are filling the place of somebody who had another three years on the board, you have to run in the next election in order to stand. So I just want to mention that for those of you, in Elgin, we have a vacancy, and so those of you who are thinking of putting your name in for that, this next election that we've been talking about, that you would be required to run for that if you want to stay on. So anyway, it was very nice to be recruited for the board by such a prestigious library person. And as a library trustee, that is part of, it's like a reminder for people that you serve, you play a role in recruiting really good quality people for the board once you're on it. So anyway, I was, I guess I'll also say that when I first was thinking about going on the board, I was worried. I was a full-time at-home mom, and I didn't know how much time it was gonna be. So I want to just throw in there that if anybody is worried about that, I think the library is a good place to start. We have one meeting a month, I'm thinking Aurora probably does too. There isn't, there isn't a whole lot more that you have to do. I mean, you read your materials and you prepare for the meeting, and maybe you go and welcome people to an event at the library, or you take part in an event. For me, in the early years, I was going to things like ground breakings and exhibits that the library was holding, you know, I was making an appearance there. But really, some of those, I could bring my kids along, and it wasn't very time-consuming. So it's a good, it's a good fit for people with all kinds of different schedule conflicts. And so I also want to talk a little bit about the process that was just being described by Berta. It's kind of funny, because my, the way I would describe that is different. Having done it so many times, you do get a little nervous with all the rules, and you go on the website, and you have to find your form, and then, you know, it is confusing. Am I, I guess I'm nonpartisan, you know, and then our library falls into two counties. So like, which county do I write on here, you know? So there's a lot of things that you have to figure out. So my advice is, go find that form on the website and print one out, and then fill it out to the best of your ability, the way you think it should be, and then show it to somebody, like you were referencing, have an attorney. I just usually show mine to people in the community here who have done this a lot, or an attorney friend of mine too, who also is a councilperson. And they can then say, "Yeah, this looks good." And then, when it looks good, that's when you make a bunch of copies of it, because you don't want to be writing all that stuff in a million times. So get your petition form that people are gonna sign, get that down, and then you can circulate that yourself through, over the course of those months that you have according to the rules there. And of course, each one of them has to be notarized at the end. So if any of your nice friends, because this has happened to me a lot too, offer to go and collect signatures for you, that's great, they can do that, but they have to follow the rules, and they have to get it notarized at the end too. Make sure, when you are handing out your sheets, this happened to me once. So the sheet says, "Signature, name, address, and county." And the first person on one of my sheets wrote, signed it, wrote their name and address, and then put their zip code instead of their county. And then every person that filled out that sheet did the same thing. And of course, since it was all uniform, I didn't really notice it, and I turned it in that way. And I guess I'll just mention here that it is, you know, you can get challenged when you're running for your petitions, and, you know, it's, things like that are the kinds of things that you can get challenged for. So it's good to pay attention when you're doing that process. Also, it's kind of funny, putting everything together in order and then numbering it, oh my gosh, that's my least favorite part. I get it all stacked up, and then it's like you have to fasten it, and you don't know, okay, are staples okay? Or do I have to go buy one of those fancy little rad things that you fold back? Or, you know, do I have to go get this bound somewhere? You know, it's just vague enough in the rules that you're not sure. So again, check with people that you, that have done it, or your attorney. And then the last thing you want to do, when you're absolutely done, is number those pages that you have to number on there, because if you, if you don't have them right and you number them, then that messes everything up, because you have to kind of go in and do that on your own. Um, I guess the other thing to mention is just to strategize when you turn your packet in, because they give you that week, and if you go first thing on the first day in the morning, you're trying to get your name on the ballot first, which is always nice. And sometimes everybody shows up at that time, in which case you go into a lottery or the ballot position. And so some people strategize, "Well, instead of doing that, I'm gonna try to get there last at the very end of the week at 5:00," which is okay. Sometimes last position on the ballot is good too. But I have known a couple people that ran a little late that day and in trouble. So be careful. You know, it's hard to get that letter in the mail, but, so it's not the end of the world. You don't have to be defeated. I felt very good about my materials. I knew that they were all legit and that I had followed the rules very carefully, except for that thing with the zip codes, but that wasn't, you know. I always get about three or four times the amount of signatures I need, so even though one whole page might have been disqualified, I wasn't worried. And actually, in the end, that page, they allowed it, because they understood the problem. But anyway, thing, when you go down to the county for the review, you know, and I thought it was gonna, but when you tell them you're candidate, then you get that letter in the mail, and that's always nice too. And then you are on the ballot, and you are in the election.
Jean, can you repeat what you just said real quick? You kind of broke up, at least on my end, so maybe you can just repeat it, and we'll catch the whole thing.
Good. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes, yep.
Okay. I'm not sure which part you missed, but I was just saying that the challenge can be, you have to take it seriously, and if you're confident in your materials, it's really not a big deal. And once you get through that, then you have to just be, get through the election after that. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so let's see, what else was on here? I guess I'll talk for a minute about why people should run for the library.
You're really breaking up. Maybe let's give it a second.
My belief is that you run for the li- Hang on, I'm gonna switch my, I'm gonna switch my internet.
Take your time.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, is that better?
It seems a little better.
Okay. Okay, how's that?
The video's a little laggy, but I think that the voice is okay, maybe.
All right, we'll try it. I, sometimes it switches back from my hotspot to my Wi-Fi, and I'm not sure what's going on.
Sure, sure.
Okay, so anyway, I wanted to talk a little bit about why I think people should, why people should run for the library board, like what's the, what's a good reason to want to be on the library board? And my first point is that I think you should run if you love the library. And if you love it and you can't imagine your life without it, and you have genuine ideas for how you can keep your library vital and successful, that's a good place to start. I think, you know, if you become a trustee, then you pretty much learn how the library works. Being on the board does not give you power over all the issues of the library, for sure. And many of those should, are and should be the responsibility of the staff. But if there is a board that can come together on vision and really support the staff as they do their jobs and plan and strategize the future of the library, that's a pretty good recipe. So board members should be open to that vision that the staff has of how libraries need to change to fit the needs of the community. So in other words, come in with your ideas, but understand that we don't, we're not librarians. We don't work in the library every day. Our staff really have their finger on the pulse of what the community needs, and that's a good staff and board relationship is when we know how to listen and take direction or give direction to the staff, depending on what's needed. Definitely, it's not a good idea to run if you are like a one-issue agenda person, because, you know, really a better solution for that is just to come to the board meeting and bring your issue before the board and let the board discuss it and address it. I mean, even if you were a board member with that one issue, you're still only one vote. So it's better to try to appeal to the board, and they're tasked with helping to shape policy and ideally work cooperatively and ethically to reach the best solution to issues for everyone. to issues for everyone in the district. So that's really a reason to go before the board, not run for the board. I think, can everybody still hear me okay? The library board for me requires obviously that I understand this leadership role that I'm in. You know, I never thought I would be the president of a library board. But you know, after I got on the library board, we had a bunch of shy people back that one night when we needed a new vice president one year. And you know, I didn't need to be the vice president, but like it was awkward for me that no one else was raising their hand. So I raised mine. You know, my mom had taught me, she always wanted strong daughters. So stepped out of my comfort zone there and raised my hand. And of course, when you're the vice president and then the president decides to get married and move out of the district, then guess what? You become the president then. So again, never imagined this for myself, but it's actually fine. I try to keep it fun for the rest of the board and even the audience members. I'm not a super serious board president, except when I need to be. So I can tell you for sure, I think our library board has a lot of fun. It is fun to be on our board. And we have a great staff, which always helps, of course. So I'll just end with, one of the questions was, what's your big challenges? And for me, my, probably my biggest challenge being on the board so far was having to vote. Well, and I mean, compared to, I've had to vote in the past for like a new, we built a new branch and we bought a building for another branch and we bought a giant bookmobile. And we've spent tons of money on remodeling projects in the library. And you know, that takes a lot of courage to get up there and always be voting to spend, spending the taxpayers' money. But for me, the biggest challenge was voting this July to open the library again with COVID-19 still out there. I never thought I would have to make such an emotional decision to get our staff back in and get the public back in and feel reassured that every precaution was being taken to keep everybody safe. I think, you know, we were doing a great job of keeping our library working for everybody, even when the building was still closed. But we did feel very strongly in our community, we needed to get people back in the building and onto our computers because there were people that needed to deal with unemployment and job searches and things like that. So we very mindfully discussed and took our time and made the decision to open again in sort of phases with limits on capacity. And so far, so good, really. That was, that was the hardest thing for me and the rest of the boards. That's about it. I just, I want to go over a couple of things though. Just we, I know we were talking about Aurora's library process. And we also, we have a vacancy on our board, obviously now. And so we also are hoping that some good quality people will want to put their name in the ring like I did and get involved with our board. I, we don't have the same terms as you guys, I guess. I think we have all four-year terms for our members. So it's just kind of a staggered set of people running of our seven-member board. And then when it's the same thing, you drop your packets off at our library with Nancy Rizzo, who is our person at the library. That's all. If you have questions, I can take them later. I'll just end with that.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Jean. That was really, really informative. And I really appreciate, you know, you talking about why, you know, you, what it means to be on the board and the significance of that, you know, role and just having the passion for the library. So thank you for that piece too. And now let's welcome Terry from Oswego Public Library District.
Thanks, Krista. And welcome to everyone. It's, it's an exciting time in many ways right now. And we're all dealing with it. I can relate to what Jean was talking about, opening the library, because we've spent a lot of hours discussing how we were going to do that here in Oswego. You know my name. My background is I was in schools. I was an educator for about 35 years. In fact, I ran for the board the first time when I retired, the first time I retired in 2001. So I've been on the board for about 20 years now. As secretary and now board president. And like Jean sort of fell into hers, I fell into mine when Vernita Hetrick retired our former president after 44 years on the board. So we've, we've had some longevity on the board and have seen a lot of changes, especially in a town that's gone from 1,000 people when I moved here in one traffic light to where we are now in Oswego. We're newcomers compared to Aurora. Aurora started the library in 1881. We were a basket of books in 1899 for the century, 19th century women's club. And we didn't become a library district until 1977. So we're just new at this game and learning. But we do have two campuses now, one in Montgomery, one in Oswego. And we serve the towns of Montgomery, Oswego, Plainfield, Bristol, and Wheaton Townships. Why did I run for the board originally? Part of it had to do with my first retirement. And I was looking for things to do because my wife was not retiring yet. So I needed, she decided I needed to stay busy. So there was an opening on the library board. And part of it was to feeling of payback to the community. One of the first things we did when we moved here with our daughters was go down and get a library card. In fact, I've still got the, the old plastic ones that we used to give out and distribute to everyone. I'm not sure, I don't have number one, so I'm not that old. But it, I'm sure it's a low number. So part of it was payback to. The library seemed a natural fit for me because it's so similar to education. But it's different too. It's for everyone, all ages. And if nothing else, the price is right. Librarians were the original search engines, as I put it. And they're still the best search engines that you can find out there. So there was a lot of things that I guess attracted me to it. The process, what did I do before I ran for the board? I had a friend who was on the board, so he could give me a lot of insight to what was happening on the board. There'd been some skirmishes prior to my coming on the board where people didn't always agree. And I always like to say that our board now, we will disagree with one another, but we don't, we don't get disagreeable. And I think that's really important for any board to do. Jean talked about one-issue candidates. I was 21 years as superintendent of schools and I saw candidates who ran on one issue, just like in some cases on the library board. It never lasts long because that issue comes and goes. And then you've got a lot of other stuff to do. And not everyone has an interest in doing that. And yet the work goes on. So I did talk to library trustees. I attended some meetings, talked to the library director and sat down and had a chat of what she was looking for and what her goals and aspirations were for the library and how long she was going to be around. Because it would not be nice to run for the board, get on the board and then have a library director leave. You know, so it would be nice to continue the relationship. I also checked newspaper articles for the last two years just to see what issues the board had been dealing with. Checked to see who was still going to be around because we too have four-year terms that are staggered. And because of filling a vacancy next spring, we're going to have five of our seven members will be reelected at that time. Let's see, what were the challenges getting signatures? That was one of the first challenges that I had. But I found that if I took my petitions to church and didn't go into the sanctuary with them, that I could get a lot of signatures very quickly at church. I'm not sure how that's going to work for getting ready for this spring because I'm up for election again in the spring. And if I do plan on running, church is not available because it's not open. So I'm not sure how many people are going to open the door widely to sign a petition or do something like that. So my suggestion for everyone would be that if you're going to do it, start early. 50 doesn't sound like much and you need more than just the bare minimum. But, but getting them could be a challenge with everything that's going on right now. Dotting the i's and crossing the t's, you've talked quite a bit about that. And little things like numbering the pages do get challenged on petitions and we've seen those be turned away. The last time we had an election, a couple of years ago, we actually had somebody that used a circulator to get signatures for her petition. And the circulator got tired, I guess, and decided to sign a bunch of names himself. So she ended up not being able to run for the board. So dotting the i's and crossing the t's are a great thing to keep in mind and keep track of. Observations over the years, all trustees come to the board with different backgrounds. And it's really important to have a shared mission, vision, and goals. That makes shared decision-making possible. And we feel like sometimes it's been said that we as a board probably do a lot more planning than other boards. But I think a lot of it is to get people to speak. As Jean said, she was on a board at one time where everybody was kind of quiet. You get those people that come in and they're not very quiet, but they do vote. And so it would be nice to have that conversation ahead of time and make sure that everybody is heard and that you understand where they're coming from. Because sometimes it's just not understanding the situation as much as it be, as it is being disagreeable. So conversation is good. Those mission, vision, and goals are always good to go back and look at. And I don't know about you, Jean, but for us, it's, it's a changing thing. The technologies in libraries, they used to say 18 months, technology changes. Now I think it's six months to a year. And not only the technology, but what our patrons want. We've done a lot of surveys of our patrons. And of course, the first thing we do is ask the staff because they talk to the patrons every day and find out what people are looking for. And that's changed. So the size of different departments in each of our campuses has changed. We've shrunk some of those departments and we've enlarged other departments. We've done a lot for the YA areas, young adult areas, where we've created spaces where the young people will come into the library. If nothing else, we've tried to create in our two campuses the feeling of destination. That when you come there, you can go there for specific reasons. You can go there just for the ambiance of sitting and watching the creek flow by because our Oswego campus sits on a creek and our Montgomery campus sits on a large wetland area. And the birders come out and they watch different types of birds nesting and everything in the back of that. And there's a creek and there's, the bike trail is going to be extended behind there so people can ride their bikes to that campus. So I think there's a lot for, for keeping the library current, that we don't look the same and act the same as we always did. It's getting noisier, I can tell you that. Our old staff would never allow coffee or drinks or anything like that into the library, even though when we renovated Oswego, we put an area in the front that could have been a cafeteria. You could walk across the street. We didn't want to compete with the Village Grind Coffee Shop, but you could walk across the street, get a cup of coffee, come over and sit because we made it a tile area and something that could be cleaned and everything. But of course, our, our former president didn't believe in drinks in the library. So that never happened. But our staff now has actually tried it and has allowed patrons to come in and have drinks and that type of thing. And it's been working very well, they're happy with it. So staff changes too, and their ideas and what their, their goals are. Trustees need to be trained. I don't think we do enough of that. Sometimes we assume that you're going to learn how to be a trustee through osmosis. And there are trainings that are put on that you can go to and attend. But we try to do that ourselves also on the policy setting, rules, and budget making. Because not everyone's had a background in those types of things. And yet that's our main role as board members. We don't run the library daily operations, that's our director and staff. But we do set the rules and regulations and policies that they have to live by. Let's see, everything works better when you have a balance. The one thing that I will tell you that's the absolute truth and you can take this one to the bank is everything works better when you have a balanced budget and money. Because when you don't, things get crazy. People get crazy. So we've been fortunate that we've been in a good financial position for many years. And that's something that I would say everyone's first priority is to work toward. I just had some comments to finish up. And then I mainly wanted to see if you had any questions. But it's been an honor and a privilege to serve with my fellow trustees here in Oswego and Montgomery on the Oswego Public Library Board. I still have people ask me, why do we have libraries anymore? Because everything's available on the internet. And libraries are so much more, starting with them being a hub and an integral part of the community. In fact, our, our campus in Oswego, the community planner for Oswego has said it's the one corner of the entire downtown area of the important buildings that, that, that make us a community. So it's a hub, an integral part of the community. We want our campuses to be a destination for our patrons. We have resources programmed. We can help with research and technological services. And during hard times, that's when we're used more than any other time, we're still free. We can help you know the demographics if you're starting a business. We have resources, databases. We can help you build a business plan. We've got a resource that we purchased in order to help you do that. And we also work with local groups that come in and meet in the library every month and talk about how businesses operate. Teach you how to be a better bookkeeper if you're a small businessman in the community. So you can learn to do other things. We have a staff whose full-time job is to help our patrons. And, and that's really what we're about. So with that, I'll shut it off and, you know, be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Terry and Jean. And Bertha, does anyone have any, have any questions? Somehow my chat cleared and I had seen one about the signature minimum. So if anybody wants to rewrite that in or just type up and unmute themselves. Go ahead.
I think I can see the question. And it was, is the 50 signature requirement uniform for all library boards?
In Illinois, I think so.
Yes, I think so too.
I would be interested in the Elgin Library District. And I'm wondering if they also offer training or ongoing improvement of skills for board trustees, anything like that?
Yes, and actually, all the new, all trustees, when they're new, go through sort of an onboarding thing with our CEO and some other staff members. And each year, there is an ILA conference that we are all invited to attend if we like to. In fact, it's coming up this month, I believe, or next month. And it's usually like a three-day conference. The ILA one will be somewhere in Illinois. And there's always a trustee day. So always a really, some really good information that you can glean from sitting in the trustee sessions. And then you can meet with other trustees and network with them and talk to them. There's other opportunities throughout the year too. I think there's a day in the spring when you can go and have like a trustee workshop, usually in Oak Brook somewhere. So lots of opportunities for learning.
Great. And it looks like there was another question in the chat. And you might have addressed this, Jean, but if you could reiterate, where can the Elgin candidates get their packets?
You have to go online, I believe it's the King County, help me out here, is it the collect, the, sorry, the election board or something?
Yeah, so.
It's the same.
Same, right? Yeah, I was thinking that it was at the same, in the same candidate guide with the same links, the same petition sheets and the same. Yes, so here's a link to that.
Because actually, is it King County or is it the state of Illinois? I forgot, no. Because actually, is it King County or is it the state of Illinois? I forgot. No, I'm sorry. Sorry that I'm not prepared.
No, that's okay. You know, we're all learning, you know, as we go. And so I will put it in our chat, everyone, the link to that candidate guide. And that is for the state of Illinois. It has all the links you'll need and all the documents you need. Also, our website, the Aurora Public Library site, has the same information, too. And it would be the same for both, for all. So, you know, there are some differences, but I, I believe that the filing and that information and the forms that you need are going to be the same.
We have it at the library, too, at both campuses, available for someone to pick up. And then they can go to Kendall County, down to Yorkville, and pick it up, or they can go online and do it. So lots of options.
That's good to know, too, that they can pick it up at the, at the Kendall County Circuit clerk?
Well, I think it's a clerk's office, but there's also the election office, too. So somewhere between there, they're down the hallway from each other. You could find it.
Does anyone else have any questions? I have a couple, but I want to make sure everyone gets theirs in. Well, I was wondering, so in the state, I don't know if anyone's heard. I have reached out to the election board for this information, but it, it is interesting about collecting signatures during the COVID pandemic. You know, and Terry, you kind of touched on that a little bit. There is no appendix or addendum or anything yet in the candidate guide to make recommendations for, for that. Does anyone have any information? They have not responded to me with any new information. So does anybody have any thoughts on that?
No, we, we actually were just talking about that at our library meeting last week, how hard it's going to be this time around to get signatures. I typically would bring my, my sheets with me to events, like even library events, but definitely like if the city of Elgin was having something, or even candidate forums that I would attend, where there would be a lot of people there. And it was a good place. And then, of course, you know, Christmas parties and things like that were always a good, but I don't think those are happening this year. So it is, it is going to be challenging.
I don't, yeah, I don't think the rules have changed anything for that. I mean, we're still going through as a board, whether we want to meet virtually, or some boards around us have started virtual and in-person meetings. And we discuss that, but we have two of our members that have compromised immune systems. We have a member who also works in a dental office, who in order for her to leave the office and go through the protocols that she goes through each night before she goes to her family, couldn't make our meetings, because our meetings are at 5:00 in the afternoon. So we've just made the decision that for the foreseeable future, we're going to be virtual. We do record the meeting and, and tape it, so it is available to anyone who wants to listen in on what we're doing. But I think I'm going to probably revert back to what I remember when I first came to town. We only had 1,000 people here. If you wanted to run for can, some office in town, you parked yourself down at the post office. And you waited till everybody trooped by you, and then, you know, you could get your signatures down there. Now you might spend a half an hour with one person chewing your ear, but you, you could still get the, the signatures that you need. Or you could park outside a grocery store or something like that, where there's people going back and forth. It might be a little easier than starting to knock on doors. I think I, I might feel a little reluctant to do that.
Right. Yeah, and certainly if there's any change to that, or if there's any, you know, adjustments that they make, we will update our, the web, the webpage I linked there as soon as we know. So that's something we'll keep our eye on, for sure.
Kelly McKay here for another question. So September 22nd, if I recall through that presentation, is the first date that we could begin getting signatures. And so that being next week. And now, as you all are contributing and talking, and I'm thinking of even standing outside a jewel, and how reluctant I would be to even give someone the pen I'm using, a shared pen. I mean, those things even seem, I would pause. Let me just say that. I'm not saying I wouldn't sign something, but I would pause and think, well, I better get my own pen and sign it with my own, you know, utensil. I, I, I'm, I'm a little surprised, given how careful the state has been and, and county for school districts and, and health resources, that maybe this hasn't been addressed. But I'm sure there's so many things they have to reevaluate that maybe it just hasn't risen to the surface. Do you think that's part of it?
Yeah, I, I think so. And I think that, yeah, there isn't much time to wait for an amendment, you know, or some sort of adjustment. It is, it is next week. And yeah, I would just recommend wearing, wearing gloves.
I know that one of the things that a friend of mine did, who's running for office, she went to the dollar store and bought lots of pens. And she had a bag, and she gave a bag, a pen to that person who was signing or will be signing. Well, she's done this in the past, but will be signing. And then she will put that pen in a bag, and then either dispose of the pens or sanitize them and donate them.
Or you could get pens made up that say Kelly McKay for the library board, and then just let the person keep it.
Oh, there you go. That's a good idea.
That is a great idea.
You stole my idea, Jean.
Yeah, yeah. And, and that's also another idea, too, with, I mean, I was thinking, too, branded pens, you know? But also just in a bag that you just, you know, kind of like sanitize at the end is, is a good idea, too. Again, keep, keep your eye on our webpage that I linked there. If there's anything, any new updates, we'd put them there. So I have a question about being first. What is that? What is the significance of being the first one there to file, if any? But I think there is, right?
Well, okay, so I'm not, I don't know. I hope it's okay to say this, but you know, a lot of people, when they vote for the, Denise, don't laugh at me. When they vote for library board, it says vote for three, and they just go bing, 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 you know, the first three. So first is good in that case. But otherwise, it's just, your name is right there at the top. It's always nice to be the first one that everybody sees.
The thing you'll have to learn if you're on a library board is it's not quite the same thing as being on the village board or school board or things like that. I don't get a lot of calls at night. And, you know, I say it's because our pay is so high, and we keep doubling it every year, but it never changes. But the one thing you do get is you do get a library card, along with everyone else.
Yeah. Great.
I think the big thing when you're collecting signatures for me would be to be outside, not go in someplace to get signatures, because I think that's, that's a bigger problem than touching anything right now, from what I keep reading.
Yeah, yeah. I, I agree with that, for sure. Does anyone have any other questions? Any need for clarification on anything?
I just want to, I want to clarify something for an earlier question that asked why I was talking about the ILA conference next month. That is a virtual conference, just in case that was misleading.
Great. Yes, thanks for that resource, too. And I like that you both mentioned these trainings, you know, because I think that's really important. I think some people wonder, well, I don't know how to be on the library board, and that might inhibit them. So to know that there are things like that, resources like that out there, that's great. Okay, well, there are no further questions. Thank you to Bertha and Jean and Terry for being here and sharing all of your wisdom and information with us at Aurora and Gilborden and Oswego. And thanks to everyone else for being here. And if you have any questions, check out our webpage, check out the candidate guide, and, and reach out and let us know, too, and we can try and find answers for stuff. Okay?
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Good luck, everybody.
Good luck, everybody. Thank you, Krista.
Thank you. Okay, everyone, have a great night.
Thank you, Krista. Thanks, Jean. Terry, thank you.
Thank you.